Good evening everyone, thank you for joining us on today August 12th for our regular council meeting. If everyone would rise for me for the quick introduction.
I'm here to provide the United States of America and consider your public interest in this conference.
Thank you, we are starting about a half an hour earlier than usual this evening for the council going through an executive session. We have just few things we need to discuss with the council, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to go into executive session. So there's one MRFA, four or five SEAs as well as E. Can I lump those together?
Okay.
Can I have a second, Sergeant? Make a motion and then all of the favors say aye then.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion best support zero. We are in executive session and the council will go down to the manager's office. We will be back around 6:30, you can start reporting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, our presentation. I'm going to make motion to the House of Representatives session.
Okay.
Thank you for your contribution. The second all the
Thank you, our presentation. I'm going to make motion to some hours in session.
Second.
Thank you, everyone's motion, but second, all of the favor. Done.
I.
Linda.
I.
Done.
I.
I motion pass. All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening. I know it's not super comfortable in here, I appreciate you being here. We'll go ahead and get started for regular council meeting. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from July. Does anyone have any edits for the minutes from? Yeah. I'll make a motion to adopt the town council meeting minutes from July twenty second, twenty twenty five, as we're. Sorry.
You got me.
We have a motion and a second, all of us in favor, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I was not present for the meeting. Motion passes three zero with one of them.
Also.
Next, we have the treasurer's warrants. So for the next few weeks, because the fiscal year just ended, we will be having multiple warrants as we continue to close out the fiscal year. So we have the first warrant, I'll make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant from fiscal year twenty twenty five in the amount of eighty four thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars and ninety six cents dated August eighth, two thousand and twenty nine.
Sure.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any question? Or discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table, all of the favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Blitzer. I.
Aye.
I motion passes four zero. And then we have a warrant for fiscal year twenty twenty six. I make a motion to sign the treasurer warrant dated August eighth, two thousand and twenty five in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty four cents. So. Thank you. Take up a motion in a second, all of the favor, or any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Blitzer.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
I motion passes four ten. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is we have a report presentation, we've got Oak Point and Charter Brothers, I think, on the phone to give us an update on town hall renovation. I think Tyian is sharing screens at the moment. Peter is in the room, hi Peter. And we have folks from Charter Brothers on the phone. So I will turn it over to you all, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me, I am Peter McGovern, I'm an architect with Oak Point Associates. We are busy designing the town hall renovation here. And I'm here just to give you a quick update on any of the plan changes since we presented the concepts to the council a year ago. I'd like to say there really is not a lot of changes to the actual floor plan. After I go through this, Charter Brothers, who is the construction manager that has been hired to work with us in the development of these construction drawings, and our estimate will talk about where we are with the estimate. So just to give you an update of where we are in the planning, we presented a fifty percent submission, which Charter Brothers base their estimate on that they're going to get presenting soon. And we are working towards presenting a ninety five percent set that you will be receiving in the next couple of weeks to look at. So the ninety five percent is for is going to be the plans and then it has all the nitty details of how it gets put together.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is he gonna? Got to close that up, so you can speak over to that.
Okay. Oh yeah, that does sound better. All right. So the existing floor plan, first floor plan on the screen now, on the north side of the building or plan left vacant. And on the right, the only really occupiable space right now is the meeting room downstairs, next slide. Existing second floor, we have the clerk's office in the southwest corner or plan upper, yep, right there. And town manager below that adjacent to that code enforcement and assessing. And then the assistant town manager, HR and finance. Next slide, please. And this floor here, we have the open meeting room here, the break room and office in the back corner and two offices behind us. So what we still plan to do on the first floor, the clerk's office is still going to be up in that northeast corner or plan left, upper left there. The only change there is during your concept plans, you saw that the vault was in that section there where the arrow is being moved. And the server room was going to be moved into where we're showing the vault. The server room is going to remain where it is for ease of construction and to better suit, to keep the infrastructure running. So that allowed us to swap that with the vault, so the vault goes on the upper there. And then we needed a space for the clerk's office, so that swapped with that conference room. So that conference room needs to be there and now that is moved to that location there. This, I think, works a lot better because the conference room is, well, at least the server room is available in a sort of open space. If it ever needs to be served, does not have to go through the clerk's office to get there. So there's no need for any security after hours or something. The people serving the server, servicing the server room can just come in and get there through sort of a public space. No real change to the queuing area there, still open, there's a desk, desk right there for standing up, filling out forms that you'd go up to one of the three windows and sit down and talk to your business there. In the yellow section below, where code enforcement and assessing were going to be located, previously they were in a shared office, but we've been asked to separate the two. So we've put a wall between them, so now assessing is in its own office from the code enforcement.
Planning.
Planning, sorry, planning. I can't read that far. And then the, the green area is still, that's the assessing office. The green is still over there where it was previously, so that was the only change on that floor, next slide, please. On the upper floor, the only change here is the HR and finance have been moved across the hall to be adjacent to Jennifer's office, the assistant town manager, which is just adjacent plan left of the stair, central staircase there. No changes to Tim's, the town manager's office from the original concepts, no changes to having the a conference room, oh, thank you. And no changes to having the council chambers in that large conference room on the plan upper side of that, the east side of the building. That moving the HR and finance across the hall frees up those two office spaces for future office space and storage. Next slide, please. And no changes up here on the third floor to the floor plan, just maybe a little function change where the, these, the two conference rooms on the backside of the hall here were originally stated for offices or conference. One is now going to be a meeting room and the other one is going to be community development, which was originally in the concepts on the second floor.
It's going to be a store.
It's going to be a storage.
Community development goes down, it's downstairs, side though. Planning, you want to develop at the same time?
Okay. Right, and so otherwise, no changes up there. Any questions on the floor plans? They're pretty much what you saw a year ago. Just with those minor changes. Thank you. So now we have Mike Bean, who's project manager of Charter Brothers, again. They're the construction managers, so we are working with them to help develop the, the plans. They will be running the people who are swinging the hammers and doing the actual construction, so they're the ones hiring the subs, so they're going out to get real market pricing. And they've started to do that based on the plans and have come up with a preliminary estimate. The slides, the next three slides are just the original concept plans from a year ago when we were presenting them. So Mike, if you want to talk about where we are in the estimate right now?
Absolutely, can, can everybody hear me okay?
Hold on one second.
How about now?
Yeah, change your audio to the owl on the TV. Do that.
We can hear you, but.
Mike, can you talk?
How about, how about now?
No. Maybe the other option? Oops, hold on, sorry, clicked wrong one.
Test that again, Mike?
Testing, one, two, three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I guess you guys can hear us all right. Yes, as Peter said, I'm Mike Bean with Charter Brothers. Thank you guys for having us this evening to give you an update on the budget that we've been working alongside Peter and the Oak Point team. As Peter mentioned, we took the fifty percent set out to the market, sort of market tested it here over the last several weeks. We made contact with about three hundred subcontractors and vendors. We engaged, we were engaged by about two hundred of them and ultimately we received about a hundred and six bids from subcontractors and vendors for which to base this estimate on. It is necessarily a little bit of a conservative approach at this stage in the game. There's, there's still some unknowns in the, in the documents that we're trying to work through with Oak Point. In addition to just getting engaged with the bidders, we did bring a masonry restoration subcontractor out to the site, mobilized a lift and did some up close investigation with Oak Point of the facade so that we could provide an informed estimate on the, on the masonry restoration, the exterior envelope work. So as you can see there on the screen, it's sort of a draft estimate now at the fifty percent stage. We are at about seven point five seven million construction cost. That is about one point one million over the construction cost that was outlined in Oak Point's earlier statement of cost estimate there, if you will. But we are already working behind the scenes with Oak Point and the town staff to detail, you know, where the deltas may be, where we want to focus our attention in terms of value engineering. We have the advantage now of all of these subcontractors and trade contractors that are, that are looking at the project with us to sort of solicit some feedback on where we might get more efficient with cost. Some of that will come through that value engineering process, some of it will come with a natural evolution of the, of the documents. It's good timing now to, to have that feedback and to have this sort of market test so that we can inform Peter and Oak Point's process and make sure we get the most efficient detailing into the, the ninety five cent set, set that is coming out sort of the end of the month. So we're scheduled to meet with Peter and, and town staff on Thursday for the first of what'll probably be a series of meetings to start drilling down into areas for improvement on a line item basis. So all a part of the natural process and the progression of these things, it's, you know, the good thing about this construction management model where we can influence the documents with the budgeting, with the market feedback, so. Sort of where we at at a high level?
I just want to point out that the method that we're using and the, the, having the town hire the construction manager rather than us developing all these drawings and putting them out on the street without this feedback. If we put out these drawings and we just get bids, you know, high bids, big busts, it, it really sets back the processes, getting the, the construction started. So being able to work with Mike and his team now, to be able to get the prices down to where the budget is, the design to fit that budget, once it's all settled, they get to go, we all know what it's doing, and we say months rather than having it, had put this on the street to qualify a different construction firms. Big bust, then we're back at square one again to have to redesign, so.
Right, so we understand the task at hand is to get the project in line with the, the funds that have been allocated. And we're, we're ready to get started here, continue that process with, with Oak Point and the town.
Thank you, Mike, council, if anyone have questions for your. All right, so what I understand is that, or things are looking a little bit over budget thus far, that you guys are doing diligent work to get us back down to six million, or something. And at our next meeting, are we going, we'll have, what's happening at our next meeting, will we get an update from you all then? The ninety five percent?
We.
Plenty.
Yep. Great, okay. Any other questions, question? Any questions you want to ask or you need to ask? All right, thank you both, thank you for being here, Mike, thanks for joining us, everyone from Charter Brothers, thanks for being online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on into public comments, if there are anyone here tonight that wants to speak about anything that's not on the agenda later. If you just state your name and your asking.
My name is George Muller, living at one twenty Portland Street, which I dubbed the highway. So the biggest problem is for, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, they did traffic count at twelve thousand, I don't know if that's gotten higher, but definitely that got lower. The biggest problem is speeding. The constant rise of noise. Motorcycle especially. Trucks hitting any jack brakes, even in the middle of night, you know, wake me up. When we had a former police chief here and said, I won't stop anybody unless they're doing thirty five or over. He never stopped a lot of people. Right now, every now and then I have a policeman standing in front of my house and I watch them and I see people driving by and no citations. If you're, if you're doing thirty, you're doing twenty percent of the limit. And I don't know how much the town, the county, the state can do to alleviate this problem. And I'm sure I'm not the only one, but it is a problem. My other concern is my town tax last time was, went up twenty eight percent. And school tax didn't go up to what, less than ten percent, it's five point, something. So I was wondering why within a year, my town tax went up twenty eight percent. Right, so. I don't know if that has to do with the evaluation, which is another problem. They had a guy come in from Massachusetts company and walked into my house and left and right walked out, and I said, you want to see the back? Yeah, walked out. And he raised my evaluation of like over eighty thousand, so it went up twenty percent. And I was told when I met with the K R P, whatever it was called, he said, well, it's not, they're not going to raise the tax, so I said, not this year, but well, next year because the evaluation would be part of that. So now we'll bring it up, and I'm already paying four and a half thousand. So we bring it up over five thousand. So. I, I don't know. We had an inflation rate of about four or five percent, let's say on average. Where's the justification for raising my town tax by that much?
I'm going to attempt to explain the, the tax piece a little bit. There are a number of factors that go into what your tax bill actually becomes. The first step is setting the budget, which is the process that happened in this process. So the school goes through their process, the town goes through our process. The point in which for residents to get involved in that process is like February, March timeframe. So if you all want to influence the budget here or either the school or the town, the times you do that is February, March timeframe. Once those budget numbers are set, those are inputs to the town council's process that we'll be going through two weeks somehow to set the tax rate for the next year. The tax rate, the mill rate is more or less a percentage of your property value. And so we, if your property value has increased, even if the mill rate decreases, you may end up paying more in taxes, that's just kind of how math works. As far as the reassessment process, but I know a lot of people are really concerned about right now. It's important to know that that is a requirement by state law that the towns complete that every ten years. We suburb was behind. When the last round was supposed to happen, I can tell you not a single one of us sitting here was, were in this position.
Twenty eight percent is over.
Agreed, I, I just want to make sure you kind of understand, I, I, I recognize how painful this can be for a lot of people. And I'm just trying to simply explain kind of how we got to here. And so as far as the reevaluation process, we have an obligation due to state law to perform that process every ten years. And it was not completed the previous time. And so we're really feeling almost like twenty years of that reevaluation shift because it didn't happen when it was supposed to, when none of us were here. We're trying to get us back in line with that every ten year schedule so that we're not feeling this huge push of the tax increase or property valuation increase, which is absolutely what people are experiencing right now. Because it didn't happen when it's still, and I am incredibly sorry for that. There's. There's unfortunately not anything that we can do other than try to move and, and change it so that the next time it is less. As far as property evaluation, there's a lot of things going on at the state level, and I really encourage you to read out to the state because this is a problem being felt everywhere and not just South Berwick. And I just really, I apologize and, and appreciate how difficult it is, these tax bills.
I need six more above my house, I paid a hundred and eight thousand. Now, it's about to hit four hundred and eighty-two thousand, that means I have a value going up a hundred thousand dollars every, every ten years. The first ten, fifteen years, it didn't go up that massively, it's the last ten years where it really went up a lot, so.
And mine went up, so last time my house, according to the tax code, last time my house was appraised, it was two thousand cents. So, mine went up ninety-five dollars this year, so I'm feeling exactly what you are. But again, my house was last praised in two thousand and six. I expect my house to go up from two thousand and six. If you look at the last ten or fifteen years in this town, look at the last five, at what houses are selling. When my daughter was looking for a house, my oldest, every house they looked at, before they even get to the realtor, was selling for forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars or asking price. That's still in the market right now. That's what's driving our house value, because my house is not worth five hundred thousand dollars, it's not. However, in this market, it is worth five hundred thousand dollars. People, people want to come to South Berwick and somebody's going to pay it, and it's hurting us all. But unfortunately, that's the market we're in. And, and again, we're all residents, so we're right there with you, and I know how happy you are, but I have to accept it because again, for nineteen years, my house was never assessed. So, that, it hurts.
The other thing I just, I also wanted to add is that this council has done a lot of things and continues to do a lot of things to, to try to help this situation. And I know it's, the, the impact of the things that we are doing is not being felt as much as I think we would like. But the work that we're doing with establishing TIF districts has done a lot to allow us to be able to take away from what we have to throw in taxpayers with. That's work that we're doing. This town was kind of a step, like over the past, I don't know, thirty-some years or so, that the desire was for this town to just be residential. So, we don't have much in the way of local business to help our tax base. That's also something we're actively working on to try to attract some more businesses into town to help us with that as well. And so, I think we recognize the problem and are doing what's within our capacity to try to do. If you join our conversation in two weeks, as we're setting the mill rate, it's a, that's, that's not an enjoyable task for me, but to have to set that, the, the tax rate for people. But there are a number of things that go into that, as, as far as the budgets, as I mentioned, the school and the municipal budgets are inputs to that process as well as what we decided to, to keep for carryover, which is basically a chunk of money that we set aside in the event that we have any tax abatements, correct, so if, if there's money that we have to pay out.
If I didn't have the state tax levated, it'd be higher too, so.
I, thank you for your comments.
Last year, they had that radar thing in front of my house, a tower, which they took down in the winter. And it, it did help. And sometimes when I'm standing on my driveway, I have that twenty-five mile an hour sign on, on my mind, when I'm standing in front of it and I just point at it, a lot of people will slow down. So, that thing is there, it might help a little bit by slowing him down. And if you, if, if you get a reputation for enforcement, people will slow down. And I think we need that, but.
Well, we, we had in the last two weeks, a hundred fifteen traffic, we have a traffic officer, and our traffic stops have been up almost ninety-seven percent, and since we put the traffic officer on now. The good news is, George, Madam Chair, if I'm letting you.
You're good, great.
Is, I'm working on some projects for, I, I am very much aware of your problem, and the problem is speeding on Wall Street. We've tried numerous issues, we know the lights will help when they get installed, which is not until twenty-eight. But however, at this time, currently right now, myself, my staff, public work director of the Economic Development Community through the TIF district, we're meeting right now, talking about townwide timing traffic devices, including one right in front of your house. Now, I'm not promising you that it's going to be a great big elephant out there, it's going to block cars. But we are looking, we have some solutions. In the last two or three years, they've come up with some good ideas, those flash signs and all. So, those things are in the works. So, one of the things you say to me is you say, Tim, I tend my taxes, you know, twenty-eight percent. Yes, they have, because we're spending money on traffic calming devices to help try to track, control some of the flow of traffic. So, it's a give and take, and I understand it's not, they're not happy with that, and I get that. But in all due respect, I'm also listening to you, and we are trying, George, we really, really, really are trying hard. And I've got some things coming, and I guarantee you'll have to come to vet me when I stick him out there.
I don't expect to walk out here and tomorrow everything changes, I, it's going to be a process, but it's just, and it's not just my, on front of my house, the speed in, in town, I think it'll stop once we get the traffic lights in.
Well, we, and we need to continue to find other affirmative measures to help assist the streetlights, the streetlights coming in twenty-eight. But we can't wait till then, so we're looking at all the things. And the way I can do that is because I, I can ask the council to give them. So, just so you know, we're working on it.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know, my problem is I can't come Tuesday starting September, so, because I have a long-term commitment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the room, Allison, John?
Hello, everybody, I'm David McDermott from Sixteenth, in Oaxaca, South Dorfman. With your permission, I'd like to read a letter from my children who. I'd like to read a letter from my children who were unable to be here today. Elizabeth Irvin McDermott, in Chaleca, who live on Thirty-Five Wadley Lane. You did, but I'd like to read a letter.
Go ahead, take it.
Thank you. It's alarming that the, that the substation planned for Wadley Lane reached the point of C and P announcing October start time for construction without your butters being informed of it until last week. But given the opportunity to weigh in on the plan, we have no idea what its mass effect and impact will be. There are many neighbors and community members who share our concerns. Most importantly, will the substation be appropriately sized and landscaped? Will the lights and noise be appropriately limited in residential neighborhood? Will continued public access be allowed in this area used by runners, bikers, dog walkers, and streetens? Great Works School, Marshwood High School, and Burbank Academy. Once the substation is established in the neighborhood, though may start out small, there's nothing to prevent C and P from expanding it to larger, more impactful, and detrimental to the area valued by our community. We ask that the town council slow down this process until the people most affected by this industrial project, from Wadley Lane and the surrounding neighborhood, have an opportunity to work with C and P and the plan. Residents want the improved infrastructure that the new substation will provide, but no one wants it in the residential neighborhood. It seems pointless to swap, swap one residential area of town for another when we have an existing industrial corridor down two thirty-six to consider as a location for a new substation. As you know, C and P is not a main company or even an American company, but is owned by Eppingrick, a branch of the giant Spanish utility, I heard, Grill. While we all love the mainline workers who go up the terrible weather to restore our storms and respond to all other random and frequent houses and publics, their employer, Eppingrick, has not shown any consideration for us regarding the substation. They serve to stockholders as well, Eppingrick recorded over three point five billion euros, or four point one billion dollars in net profits in the first half of twenty twenty-five alone. It's a report that, remember that this is not the main company attempting to drastically alter our town, but a huge, multi-billion dollar, multinational company. There is nowhere in our town can advocate for the best interest and work of C and P to find a substation location that isn't in a beautiful residential neighborhood. We ask that C and P, C and P, and by extension, Eppingrick treat us here in May as a high-value market that describes to be, in itself, not only of the butters, but residents of the largest surrounding neighborhood before they proceed with this project in South Berwick. Thank you.
Yeah, so. Madam Chair, members of the town council, this is the first that I, I've heard of this, and I believe the code officer, have you heard of it? Code officer has not heard of it, so. I don't know if there was a previous agreement between a previous council and C and P, or a previous agreement between a previous code officer and C and P. I do not know that, we'll have to investigate that. But as I was sitting here today, I can tell Dave and your family, everyone else, we had known all of this. We are, this is the very first I'm hearing of this. So, we will investigate it, but oftentimes utilities, utilities do not have to follow. Sometimes they don't, they grant information from the state to do utility improvements without.
It calls out the not-referenced essential services.
Essential services. But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they couldn't have contacted us and worked with us, so we could have notified the butters. The town has gone all of it right now, I, I will look into it and.
I, I, I think one of the concerns is that we have established an industrial zone, and this is an industrial project and really, you know, residential labor, I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, that it's heavily used by the public as walking dogs and walking and, and it just seems silly that they have these lines and the noise through this residential neighborhood when we have an area that's established for that.
Yeah, again, we, we do know they say this has been outside of Furbu, so.
I understand that, I find that shocking, you should have written a letter, you're a butters.
Yeah, we should, well, we should have been told because absolutely, we should have regulated the, the process for the butters. And so, we, we are left in the back as much as you, literally speaking, so to speak. But we will see if we can research it and find out.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other public comment?
Thank you, I'm here, I thought we were voting. But during this conversation, so for context, for the town I have reached, we got notice in twenty twenty-one that was sent to town. I will take a rap by it, so I know I contacted, and I don't know who it's, I don't know if it might have been Joe to make sure that that notice posted. And that it was. I don't know what the process is, but I have literally just reached out to their, their government fair scheme because my, my phone is not letting you search back that far, but I know that about when it was. This town did the signal, they did, they did their land, and with all of the, I mean, the jurisdiction of the PFC. But I will, I will circle back with more information when I have it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think the point of, you have two thirty-six, this giant industrial area already with many power lines, I think is a very valid thing to their attention, that's not too far from Wadley Lane, so we just do it there instead.
Well, if they're already, if they already started construction, I have no idea, October. October, so probably too late. And, but if, so they probably, it sounds to me like, I would have imagined a council would have been briefed on this, and I'll look tomorrow, work in a minute, with the council, or Joe, code officer, somebody should have given authorization, would have then have given some kind of authorization, so it sounds like it came twenty twenty-one.
What is that going to be, I think, please do just question the public's comment period on there, and I don't know if anybody will do the town.
Probably, it's probably not, right?
So, we had an notice downstairs on the bulletin board that says, we're accessing public funds from this date to this day, and then they, then it's closed and stuff. But I will find out if it was.
You may, unfortunately, have very little certainty of whether we's, unfortunately, it's. But it would have been nice if I'd been able to at least tell you about it and explain to you, but we have no common knowledge at this point.
I'm totally kidding.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Stein, Howard, I can have a lot of, my name is Paul B., but I do remember that, and I, I live up in that area. And I, I thought they bought property from a person that lives up there, and then I thought they couldn't develop it because of some land issue or something. And so, I, I felt like, oh, good, you'd say.
Right, sir, right.
Okay, so. So, I know, I know, as mentioned, and I know people spoke at, at town council meetings about it, because everyone was pretty upset.
Okay, all right, well, we'll look in a minutes, we'll research it, see if we can find myself, hold and park, so, we'll see what we can do.
I recommend, no, thank you, more. As well.
Funny word stuff, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to propose that we shuffle the agenda a little bit, I know a few of you are here for specific things, and it's very warm in here, and kind of help, help us all, so I'm going to make suggestions that we rearrange the agenda, and we do, and we go ahead and forward with unfinished business number three, Tuskegee Day first, followed by number two, new business number six, the ambulance float, followed by number three, or sorry, followed by quote-unquote, some action update, number five, new business number five. And then, from there, we will then proceed to go through the agenda. So.
Second.
All those in favor of rearranging the agenda, as I stated, say aye.
Aye.
Listen.
Aye.
Definitely. All right, so we are going to start with unfinished business number three to Tuskegee Day. We got kind of stuff, I know we have a video to share, David or Rachel, do we, would either of you guys like to say anything since you're here? No pressure.
Oh, no, just like, oh.
We share their facts.
Yes, okay.
If you're ready, I can share.
So, we, so we received a, a really lovely video from our friends at Tuskegee. They're essentially thinking we can be for their recent visit, and we just wanted to show this, and. Hopefully, if I am working.
Hello, my name is Karen Hopkins, and I have visited South Berwick three, maybe four times, but each time I fall in love with the community all over again. The last time that I was there was for Tuskegee Day, and I do thank the town manager and the town council for all that you all did to support Tuskegee Day. Among us, those of us who came from Tuskegee, the consensus is unanimous, hands down. It was a huge success, but I don't want you to take my word for this. I'd really like for you to hear the opinions of people who made the trip. I want you to hear from them that, gosh, hard to put it into words, but our hearts are full of gratitude.
Hey, when we came and we happened to be there on June twenty-second, it was an exciting time. We reconnected with old friends that we've developed over the years and found some new friends, and this particular effort of sister city between South Berwick and Tuskegee has expanded over the years, and we expect it to grow bigger.
To my friends in South Berwick, David, Rachel, Amy, and everyone else. Thank you, I totally enjoyed myself, I look forward to coming back. And I look forward to you coming here.
You know, just seeing two different small communities that had two different experiences and different viewpoints on life, just to see them come together, you know, is, is great to see, and you know, I just really would wish some of, some more of my generation and the youth would get involved in things like this, because, you know, we just see things as boring, but you know, I just love, I love the experience and I look forward to going back.
You guys are wonderful city, wonderful, beautiful, looking forward to coming back, looking forward to you guys coming here so that we can teach you the same way you do, you're such great people. Lots of prayers, two minutes of prayers, so I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank.
And we sincerely appreciate the hospitality that we receive and a warm welcome whenever we come to South Berwick. So, we look forward to many more visits, reconnecting with South Berwick, and mineral visits from the citizens of South Berwick to Tuskegee, Alabama.
Great, thank you, why are you, it's just a link. Great, thank you. Why are you, that's just a link. We can put that on our, on website somewhere. I, I'm very grateful that they, whoever put together that video is lovely. Um, so any thing either you would, would you like to add?
Thank you for all the support. It, it was wonderful. The, the relationships that we have with them, like I, I listed five of them, I'm out. Heard for like more days. And like it's, it's like, yeah, and it was just, it's so wonderful and gave you. Just thank you for all the support and thank you.
Well, thank you all for organizing. That's a fabulous um relationship. Um, alright, um, that is your Tuskegee Day. Now we are going to move on to new business number six, the ambulance.
One ninety.
Thank you.
One ninety.
I, I hope that's something.
So, I believe, um, as a transition, we've ordered November transition to our own E M S service. And doing so, the first step in the process was to um, we'll need to acquire ambulances. Um, so the first part of that was we'd set money aside in capital. To go ahead and purchase a used ambulance and put the final one time thing. And eventually, what our new one would take anywhere from twelve months to three years. Um, used ambulances right now are hard to really come by because new ambulances taking three years. So to find a good one, um, we budgeted about a hundred twenty five thousand. Hopefully, we can get one that had under a hundred thousand miles, um, that wasn't a road wreck, that could. Back doors would stay closed and put the patients in so they don't. Go out, just kidding. Um, but really, it's, it's hard to find good used ambulances. Um, through that process, Chief Hamel um stumbled onto a local G, a local ambulance and uh. Worked with the surrounding county, get that, and I'll let him go from there because it's really. It was Chief Hamel and the, the chief from McGonville that put this together and. I want to thank certainly Chief Hamel and Town of McGonville for making this happen. This is a phenomenal, phenomenal deal for Town of South Berwick.
Thanks, Tim. So to Tim's point, the uh, we had budgeted money for a used ambulance. Uh, we had. Somewhere in the range of a hundred to a hundred twenty five thousand dollars were looking. Um, they're pretty few and far between, uh, like Tim had mentioned. Uh, I know those that are out there in pretty poor condition. They, they run pretty hard. Um, kind of a pull on the side. I've been working pretty closely with a bunch of the neighboring chiefs through the whole process. And Chief Oz again, a gun with uh, has any ambulance coming. It's actually late. It was supposed to be here last month. Uh, but it's coming this month and has graciously offered up their uh, two thousand and eleven Ford ambulance to us. Um, for really a, a unbelievable price of thirty two thousand dollars, so.
On both the mileage and the structure.
So the trucks, um, it's, it, you know, it's two thousand and eleven, it's a few years older than I was really kind of looking for, but. It is in immaculate condition. The government's a fairly small town. They take, you know, the best of the best care of everything they own. And um, the, the bonus with this one is we had also budgeted money for updated stretcher equipment um in the used truck. And, and this ambulance is coming with a one to two year old um power stretcher and a power loading system, which those items alone. Are about seventy two, seventy two thousand dollars, so. Um, we, we could uh sell the stretcher tomorrow, would make money, but obviously that's not what we're here for, so. Um, I think it's about as good a deal as we're going to get. It'll be available shortly. Um, we'll be able to integrate it into the system um pretty seamlessly as we go.
And even if for some reason something didn't work out. Well, something failed, whatever, later on, we could always sell this truck and. Recoup our money, but as Chief said, the power stretcher loans were at seven two thousand. Truck only has what, forty some?
Oh, forty thousand miles. It's not even a fanny print on the driver's seat, which is.
Yeah, mostly.
How new it is, so.
Mostly used trucks were looked at anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty thousand. Like Chief Hamel said, they were pretty, were pretty had. Um, you know, the first thing I told Chief, I said, let's not buy trucks on a benefit. Use trucks on a wall in any of those places that run them to the ground. And a gun, a gun with, you know, I know about a gun with his walls, Chief, they take care of the equipment spotless there. It's just immaculate.
So they have a, they have a busy two months a year and the rest of the time it's pretty sleepy, so.
Awesome. Did you say Ford G?
Ford, yeah, it's a Ford uh, there.
Okay.
I did my best.
Post ambulance is a day, it's going to be very, very, and it looks great work here.
Um, so does he have any other questions for the cheaper gentleman?
Well, that's exciting. Uh, I don't know a whole bunch about vehicles, let alone ambulances, so um. So I'm clear, we've already budgeted for a hundred and twenty five into our budget.
Right.
Uh, and this is going to be for thirty two.
Hmm.
Um, so I think that's great. Not to look a gift horse in the mouth, so to speak. Why are we stealing it? Is it, does it not have axles or nothing? Like what was?
They, they had, didn't have a huge, uh, real plan to sell it. They were going to trade it. And that was uh above the traded value that they were offered from the dealer that they might have knew from, so they offered to pass it through to us at the traded value.
Awesome. Alright, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Chief Oz has been a great help through this whole process, having, you know, him pretty regularly, and he's, he's pretty excited to help us out and get us on our feet, so.
Excellent. I appreciate that, and I think that that is just a question of transparency that I won't be able to say as a citizen that we.
Understood.
Thank you.
And we'll share, move to. Town management, yes, purchase two thousand one E four fifty E ambulance.
Okay. Uh, motion then second question. Um, the only thing I want to say is that I think that is the product of like good relationships, the community, definitely. And I would love to, at some point, once this whole transaction goes through, I think it would be wonderful if. Um, Tim and yourself and me and somebody like you could better thank you or whatever, and maybe what, so there's a council meeting or something, so giving us a name. I'm just going to say thank you. Uh, okay, we have a motion on the table, any other discussion? All of the papers say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Ayes, motion passes for zero.
Thank you very much.
Do you hurt?
Thank you. Alright, um, and our last shuffling, uh, we're going to go to court enforcement, action update. Alright, and I'm going to invite Jenny to come up and share with us this informational only update. And then, and then maybe after this, I'm going to request that we turn the air conditioning back up. That's getting really rough.
So much.
I think now that we're off, we're, we should officially be on microphones now. So hopefully that'll help, but if anyone in the room is having trouble hearing, please let me know. Well, we're talking, so. Okay, I was like, did you hear me now? Okay, right.
Jenny, just let me know when you're ready to share the screen. Let me know when you're ready to share the screen. At the pictures.
Okay, great. So, there are things about the mail, sorry about that. So I think this update is about a uh, hidden notice that we've had um off with Shrot Road. Um, around forty, I think the. Uh, around forty two with Shrot Road, um, there was a um homeless encampment sort of thing out in the woods. Um, two owners of the property, one did not want to comply at all. The second owner did, and it just happened to be that the second owner, um, we were able to create a relationship with um her. And uh, work with her for, and like um, eventually get her to hire Serf Pro. Serf Pro went out and um cleaned up the property. Um, during that time, we had, is it okay if I?
Yeah, that's what I want, change more for the other time.
Cool, alright. So, okay, so anyways, um, so what it is, is. Um, we have a officer here in town who has not only gone above and beyond during the situation, like. It's code's job all the way along this, and it's that, like, so this is what we do. Um, but it's not what he does. So he has mercy of Butters, he has made him feel safe. He has responded every time they called. He's taking um. Time on his day off to come in and, and show up at their house and talk to them and work with them. He was off the day of the cleanup. He chose to come in on his day off the entire day. It was hot, hot, hot that day. And um, he sat out there with full enforcement. Um, the entire time we're out there, and so, until that property was cleaned up, and that's Officer LeDon, so. Just giving a shout out to him for that. Uh, and on top of that, we use um Erin, who is our behavior liaison from the police department. And um, she was also involved. She came and she gave support to the family. It's hard to see your um belonging and up. Unfortunately, in trash bags in the trash can, um, and she was there uh throughout the entire morning to just in case the um. Second property owner needed her. So huge shout out to those two. They were wonderful through the process, um. But huge shout out to Officer LeDon. And it's clean up, so um, anybody that had a moving takeover or. Um, you know, was really upset about it, it is gone, and it should be gone hopefully forever. And if not, it'll be a little bit. Do you want to share pictures or?
No.
My pictures, why not?
I want to give a shout out, because I want to give a shout out to both of us, because this is deciding the CDs. Travel places in town, she handled this with very little contact to legal, legal department, which saved a ton of money. Took the initiative, worked with our enforcement, involved with guidance from legal. Um, the general does on the town local level, save a ton of money. Um, with behavioral health professionals being prone, were able to really help these citizens, help these people who solve problems in the neighborhood. And that's huge. You don't get a chance to see that or I want to show you this, this success story that. People don't get a chance to see, because what, what ended up, ended up happening is they come in and ask over. Can I get a permit to do something? Jenny is up saying, no, because we wouldn't. Oh, I like hold on, and those four people are, well, oh, it does a lot of good things too. This is one of those that's. And we got made in the health involved, with alarm force involved, and again, definitely done for the, definitely done for the name.
Yeah, it took quite a long time to create that relationship with the second property owner, which was the individual's mother. Um, but we got there and at the end she thanked us for our support. Um, Butters wrote a beautiful write-up um for Officer LeDon as well. I'm hoping that we will get some sort of a word.
Yes, that's the stuff I want you to do. Need to know those online scene. Thank you.
Are we talking about this?
Thank you, Jenny. Um, I, so I apologize, Jenny. We are, um, you were all from here for us to do. New business, new business seven and eight, right? Those are the two things. Um. I'm going to make a motion that we take up new business seven and eight right now.
Sorry.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Melissa. Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes for zero. Um, this.
Very.
Um, alright, so um, to get everyone on the seat, we are now on new business number seven. Public, public action, public hearing for base of property LLC. I know that Tim and Jenny kind of teed it up. I, I'm not sure what we can say publicly about here.
So the only thing we need to do is if you want to schedule a public hearing for a potential incentive agreement. Then properties, that's a motion I would make.
I'm going to keep the motion that we schedule a public hearing for base of property LLC on September ninth. Uh, at six thirty P M, third floor of town. We'll still be here at that point during town, town meeting. Um, that is much, schedule it for September ninth, six thirty P M. Um, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those favors, session, public, the public hearing, aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion here. We, we need another motion.
Number eight, just a motion, Dave won't hold.
No, I, we, we didn't want to authorize you to work with legal to fill in those holes in that, that agreement.
Just, just a motion for the town manager and board officer uh to work with legal to help.
I'll make a motion um to authorize the town manager, quote unquote, an author to work with legal and finalize the um, uh. Kind of that agreement um for base of property. Thank you very much. All those favors, aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
One.
Aye. Uh, moving on to new business number eight, public number action, uh, preparing our major miracle. Uh, we, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to table this. Um, until there's a couple of questions we have outstanding with legal, um, so I'm going to make a motion to table this until we get them. Legal at which point we'll bring this back.
Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those favors, aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Oh, aye, motion back. Great, thank you. Alright, um, we are back to normal order of agenda. Um, which gives us to unfinished business number one, visitor quote conduct. You have the page number eight. So, uh, this was a topic that I identified at our last meeting. Um, I had something come up last night, I wasn't able to attend, and so the council decided. Table this topic till the evening, when we have a full board. Um, the town staff and the town administration had brought forth to the council the idea of passing a visitor quote of conduct. Um, to um, help man, thank you to the staff and ensure it all for a compacted. That could help in a special, if for these matters. Um, this is completely outside of the council, I think it's okay for us to stop. Um, if we wanted to have passed an executive order or come forward, we would need to take a motion vote on that. Um, if we wanted to see this as a sort of ordinance, then that's a much greater process, because we have to schedule a public hearing and. But so the process may be, that I think we all need to kind of discuss what our thoughts are on this. Tim, is there anything you would like to add?
Oh, this is a, a mobile, um, you know, people normally don't come in and. Possession, but we have had cases, you know, I, I've had one recently where we're dealing with consent agreement. Where people, you know, they were pounding on my desk, so they come in, come back to time and get the. Um, we just don't have anything official. I mean, I could hit them on bill with L P D, but I don't have anything official to back me to say. So I'm just, I called different town and talking to LA, they had this since twenty twenty one, right after COVID and. They have a post-it and said they haven't had any issues, work well. Um, that's really all of them. I was just asking, how considered as an executive order, not an ordinance. Um, again, it's not anything, what I'm going to stand is the door, point of people's chats and what, it's a rarity this happens, but. It's happened at the clerk's office and it's happened at boat office and it's happened in my office and. Just, it'd be nice if we could just say, look, it's just, uh, we're just asking you, it's a professional place of business. This has to be professional, that's all. And it's just more of a notice than it is, more of a reminder than it is a enforcement action tool. Um, but we certainly, you know, I'd ask the clerk, if she wants to. Speak about issues in her office, she's had, you know, so I, I would just ask the council that just this time of day, so.
Um, before I go to the council, I just want to point out, we did receive some, you know, donations from residents on this topic. Um, I believe I have all the documents that we've seen from Hackham, Coolin, um, that is on our, for our main street. And the amount of uh Terry Coolin with, with Zee T Brookfield Drive. You know, Joel Michael Martin at Five Beach Road, as well as hearing for those at one sixty Bell Marsh Road. Um, to kind of summarize the sentiment of all four of those, um, all four of them, where people reaching out, but not in favor of us pursuing new quote of conduct. Um, I think I got all of that. I'm looking to the council and I think that's all, that's all we thought. Um, just those four emails, title for those, those are included in the minute. Um, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak about this? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Stein, Howard, I think he'll arrive. Um, I thought it was too late to make a comment on this, so, um, I. I may not phrase this correctly. Um, I think it is sad that. The people who serve on our town government feel that they need to do this to people who visit. Um, I think there might be some customer service issues that could be addressed, perhaps with staff. And Tim, who said that it wasn't an enforcement issue, just a reminder, but why can't you just? And Tim, who said that it wasn't an enforcement issue, just a reminder, but why can't you just remind people?
I, I certainly.
That, that's a question, I mean, and, and also it's very subjective. So what you might think is unsafe or angry or whatever, might not really be, and I think that puts. People in town, you're almost making it um, with the, you know, us versus them. So I would say let them know.
Um, I have some thoughts on this that I will share, um, I understand the, the, why, uh, why people are resistant to this. Um, because we shouldn't have to remind each other to be kind and respectful. Um, unfortunately, I think the state of the world is that, oh, that behavior is becoming more and more acceptable. Um, personally, I feel the tone that needs, that that we need to hit with this. Is more something like the sign and ad that is reminding parents that. These are volunteers, your kids are playing baseball, this is just a game, we're all here to watch baseball in that scenario. I feel like what, what tone I think I would like to hit with anything we do with this is. A reminder to people as they're coming into the building, um, you are coming in to take care of your day-to-day business. And you are interacting with people who are there, their job. And unfortunately, as local governments, much of the processes, many of the processes, the code enforcement, the testing, the town clerk, et cetera. Are responsible for executing, they have no control in how, what that process looks like, what the dollar amount is that you have to pay, et cetera. Um, and so I feel like that's something the office kind of generally needs for our might, well, uh. Again, I, I wish that this wasn't something to talk about, um. I joined our department meeting yesterday morning, um, Tim holds a department meeting every week, the department has been, um, the entire council invited to attend. I attended yesterday and heard about, um, one of our women who works in this building. Got to town hall yesterday morning before the building was open, and there was already a gentleman waiting outside. And she was visibly an hour and a half later shaken by this encounter, by this man who was upset and just struggled about who knows what. And I feel like very important that we set a standard, not just for our employees, which I will be clear we have. We have a standard, we have a code of conduct for our employees. Um, and I feel like it's very important that we, one, support our employees, because that helps support our family. We do not support our employees, um, and help them feel safe and comfortable at work, um, then we will not have. Um, and I, I feel very strongly that we do need to say something on this topic, I think it's up for debate. Uh, I think an idea could be, we're in front of the renovating town hall, could this be? If, if we're uncomfortable with the idea of an order or ordinance, and I would say I am uncomfortable with the idea of an ordinance, I think the order, an, an order is. Definitely better, if I'm in favor of ordinance, but, but this also be, could be used as an opportunity to. Put some type of signage at the entrance of the door that is a reminder to everyone walking in the building, not just the residents. Also to the employees, a little reminder of, hey, you're walking in to do your job, and you're walking in to provide customer service. And if you're a resident, you are walking in to receive customer service, and you're walking in to likely do something. And likely have to pay or write a check that no one wants, like to, to, you're likely there to do something that no one wants, right? Unless you're getting a marriage or anything else. And so I think I would love to see a kind of strike against home like that, that's just a reminder of. Hey, we're all human, and we're just trying to get through today, and who knows what you have dealt with today, and what I have dealt with today, and can we all just remember that. We should treat each other with respect, even at the end where we are getting.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
I don't know why it's not working, I just, it is on.
Right.
I just wanted to make a comment that, um, it's not always just about the behavior. Um, there was a resident in the office in line waiting at the clerk's office who was vaping in the hallway the other day. Um, so some of the things that aren't spoken about, you know, are addressed in this, so it's not always about behavior, um. Also, I just posed a question, I mean, yes, I understand we want to be, all be customer service professional, everything like that, but my question is to the residents who are pushing back, it's just. Should you be swearing at us so much that other people online are commenting? That's, that's my only thing, I mean, you can be upset all you want, you can, you can have an argument with me, but just keep it cordial, all are asking. Okay.
Yeah.
Well done. Um, I think, uh, when I initially, excuse me, when I initially back to do this. Um, first of all, I, I agree, uh. A lot of what Mallory said, um, you know, it'd be nice to have, um. Be cordial with each other, especially since, um, people are working, uh, and for whatever. The question that I, I, I'm most concerned with is the legality of this, of this, and wording around it, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about, um, that this is. We have, um, employees throughout all of town. Um, and is my, I mean, I just had people working on my front curb, you know? I, I could have been one of those guys, but I couldn't, but I couldn't have been one of those people out there swearing on people, um. Is my yard now part of town, right? I want to make sure that all, all of our staff are covered. How far this will go, how do we, how do we make sure that that is, uh, right? Um. I'm not at the point right now, I think this is the, I, I, I would like to have the legality question answered. Uh, maybe some different wording, um, to get to the gist of what we want to have, then maybe it is just. Going to Hobby Lobby and getting a sign, we posted over the, the door type of thing, but, um, I'm just, I'm worried about. I'm worried about the whole thing of, uh, this is our taxpayers' right to be in this, in this building, whatnot, and all that mumbo jumbo. But as well as the rights of people working, right? And how do we balance that in a way that is enforceable? I don't want to have something, I don't want to put our name, my name on something. That, that I hate standing behind as an enforceable, for people, right? And, um, that's just what I'm struggling with, like, I just wanted to share with the four of us, so we can. So you can take a trip with this mum, jumbo, this in my head, please, so thank you. Thank you.
I definitely think this can be something that might be, and you should talk about, I agree, Jeff, that like, um. The fact that you found the language, some legality question for, um, Jeff, my, my, do you think you want to?
The only thing I look like, sorry, uh, understanding, I am. Feel like way back, when a billion years ago, I did customs, certain side, you, a lot better hated it, having one of that. While depending on who had what they needed, it felt like that, you get it, yeah. Um, it's, it's not good, I don't want to make any money, whatever we decide to do, it's much about dislike sometimes. People would have a public reading problem. Give everybody a chance to say their piece, be inactive, didn't say your piece, a nice day. Thank you, if you support our employees, we have to build. The republic, their rights, the command and dollars, their thoughts on it. And then we go, if it's overwhelming, no, offer something different, they get the language. We have an information meeting here, or a meeting, go. And they also have, we have any issues now, all Jack do is trespass. If there's no second guessing there, with the police department, if it's a viable concern, they get just that. That's the end of that, they get our computer. Extreme, but right now, that's what we have to work with, but if you have that case, trespass. Your safety, fair enough.
When I repeat, I just want to add that I did learn about the department meeting yesterday, with the recent changes that we've changed the transfer station, and the operating hours, functioning differently, et cetera. Um, so the change that we need to, the ability to, um, drop construction, um, beat what roofing materials, things like that. We're now having to keep, we're, we're paying one of our police officers to fit a transfer station on weekends, people cannot behave themselves and be kind and respectful toward transportation staff. That's something people should be aware of, if that's happening on weekends, or of that, about the changes or whatever is happening in the transportation. And I think that that's, that's an example of what we're trying to confront, the issue, you know? Uh, and I've been, I've been, having a police officer there, it's helping issue, definitely. Is that what we want to use our sneaks for? Complete their own people who can't hear, but.
I just want to point out, the council, yes, I authorize a police officer four hours overtime, a month, a lot of it's all the. Just, it's just a change, you put up here, instead of a change, because people are being disrespectful. And, um, you know, later tonight, I think, um, two employees that we hired this summer, kind of a base of all.
What? Fine.
Both resign.
Come on, she made me my neck, um. Uh, I. I can't believe we're here, like, I can't believe we'll come to this, like, this is, it's disheartening. Um, but I, I, there's a lot of things that I, I don't like that's written in this specific code of conduct. As Tim had mentioned that he needs something substantial that will back him when he does have to take action, but. Like, under the expected conduct, persons under the influence of alcohol or other substances are not allowed. It's called disorderly conduct, if somebody comes in here drunk, o- ocs, that will happen. That's, so we don't even need to have that written, because it's already a law. Or smoking is prohibited, smoking is prohibited, meaning it's for buildings. So about reminder, no smoking signs, I'm not going to go through this all. If we need something, it's sad that we need something, but I'm just not on board with this particular, like, everything that's in this document. And I would like to see, um, definitely some revision taken.
Well, I would ask, if I schedule a Dallas call, I don't have time to, this is, it's a priority, but if you just want to table this for one, that's fine. We'll, at another time in the later days, I got, I got some stuff that I got.
Uh, what are you wondering about, the, I guess, simple?
Or, or just both of that, whatever, right? We don't have to spend a lot of time, fine, thank you, so, okay.
I would, um, I, I'm good with that, Tim, I think, um, I would like to offer an idea that if the council is receptive to that, and actually, uh, so I have been. I'm a little behind, but I've been working on the, the, the art thing for the town hall. And the idea that I had of some, some sort of more, I will be like friendly sign or vacation or something at the entrance of town hall, or somewhere in the building. Getting the tone that I'm kind of talking about, about. Hey, well, you know, if you're a resident, you're just here to be visiting, you're a employee, you're, do your job, like, that kind of a tone. I'm kind of offering that maybe something better in the next few months, of something not an order by the council, but more so kind of a message to be placed by the end of the town hall. We hope that, um, because better and credit, um. That's something that I agree. Okay, so on this topic, I'm going to make a motion that we table this.
But take no action.
Hey, I'm gonna make, take, make a motion that we take no action this evening on the visitor's code of conduct. And, um, in the next several months, we will discuss, uh, a potential, uh, code of sign or some word. Uh, we got a motion in the second. Yeah, um, all those favors, aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Letta, aye, John?
Aye.
Aye, motion back to four zero. Right, not intention, but sorry, number two, legal update. Um, so just as that the context for everyone, um, we are essentially kind of like revisiting our legal representation. And if we put out our, either they're, uh, kind of revisit who we have for legal representation. We received two applications from, for insurance, with our current, um, legal representation, as well as drugs and drugs.
One motion.
John, I'm strumming, thank you. Um, I will make a motion, um, to ask the town manager to settle interviews, each of those firms sometime in September, on.
Second.
Um, we don't have a specific case there, but you find out what award, and that would be just for a minute. Uh, okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, settle interviews with both legal firm, um, in, on September. All those there to add?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
One.
Aye, what's the time to start here? Okay, now we are at business number one, Happy Valley LLC, with our, oh. So we have a case number. One, six, and nine. Right, um.
Uh, we have to, uh, we have to be, wow, the Happy Valley, LLC, the license holder, standing with no, from the three.
Thank you, we have a motion in the second, any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I, I did notice that the application has actually been a little bit revamped from the previous year. Um, and my, well, two questions is, sorry, I have to find this one, but it's, um. Oh, so on question number eight, it says, do you allow dancing or entertainment on the licensed premises? And they answered no, however, in the upcoming agenda, they're asking for the, um, special amusement permit, which pertains to, at these agents. So like, I'm not sure if it, and might be, there's some like difference in.
Application?
Yeah, like, I don't.
I feel like, when I look, I felt like advanced and started discussing, I feel like the dance thing was, or, or was like, like the main, like, that's how I was. Working it, and then the next, and then I was kind of like that. Figures and things, like, in front of my eye.
So I guess that just comes to the, like, what's the definition of entertainment, and, and on question number eight, because is it just, you can buy, is it, you know? And I just didn't want, if it just needed to be changed to yes, I just want with the application to be correct, or if it doesn't need to be changed.
I, I did not, I had no.
I borrow your mic.
The point of the, our office, so. They'll have to, I, I, I had nothing to.
To speak to the different formatting of the licensing, the state of Maine has now gone to all online renewals and applications submitted. So what I get now is an email saying, hey, this person has submitted an application to the state, and I print what they have, and I submit it to you, and then I go back and I just click a button, and it's all done. After the vote, um, as far as a special amusement permit, um, hard on me now, because they don't come in and submit an actual paper form. And that's when I usually have the conversation with the applicant of, hey, do you need a special amusement along with this, because it is a requirement to accompany this? Now that it's online, I now then reach out to the applicant via phone, which I did, and ask them if they still needed this, and they said yes, and they came in and filled it out, so I can't speak to the. Answer for number eight, I didn't notice that.
Uh, because then also, um. On expression nineteen, it says, what will your business hours, meetings, and if each shade is open and closed, and it says, Harry, between eleven A M and ten P M. Uh, on our website, it says that they're open until eight o'clock, and my, and I don't really know. When we had a, a business come in and apply for, those who, you know, and they're wanting to up on the Old Main Street. I said, can we please change your hours to accommodate the rest of the businesses that were only open until eight o'clock on that street, and it was Happy Valley, over these, like. You know, all of the businesses were only open until eight, and he asked, no, please, can I have another hour, and he said, no. So I don't know where are they, do they, do you go through the planning board to ask for your hours of operation? And does this need to be addressed where? And does this need to be addressed where this is not, what their operating habits?
Yeah, we'd have to be sure, I haven't thought of the motion through, uh, on the survival. It will have to look back and look and see what their planning board, what the planning board gave them permission to do. And to see if, I, I don't know if they're following, we haven't had any complaints.
Right.
But the most we could do, until we have time to be reminded on the. So.
Well, and you can see, like. Kind of the first step, there's some like questions on the agent, uh. Okay, if you have actual public hours, if it's business, what pays, why are those not? Agent, or, you know, like, if it, if it doesn't vary Monday, Tuesday, whatever, why isn't that? Um.
Oh, you said, calmly. I'm kidding. Only what happens if it's five, no one pays. Begin to ask them to attend. Or answer the question. Whatever you want to do. But they're licensed to five and nine seven, so I would. No, so. Yeah, till my feet, take back.
So I think, like, two, two questions, I think, I thought I had two questions that I think you might want to. Come back to them, it's just, but. Cause the special amusement department, I mean, inherently implies. Dancing, music, et cetera, but they're. Liquor license application, education, et cetera. With kind of like, does that need to be treated?
Right.
It, it's so, that should need to change it. Uh, and then I think there's just clarification on, like, their operating hours submitted outside of. What you're pointing to, uh, other local businesses, like. That's something you could. Um, kind of, um, so I guess I would say. What, what I'll, what I would do was, I'm gonna make a motion, people, new business wanted to coordinate meeting hours, P six. Um, and. In that we ask those questions of Happy Valley about the special B, the dancing B, as well as, uh, to specify their actual operating.
On your order. You do have a current motion, the cable already to review it.
Thank you very much.
You're right.
Um. Okay, so we currently have a motion on the table to go ahead and approve the liquor license. What should I, y'all hold it?
If you're looking to fit, uh, if you're looking to table it, then you would fail the renewal and then make the motion to table it. Yeah.
Uh, so we have a motion on the table. Um, everyone. Uh, all those in favor of motion on the table, which would approve the liquor license, Happy Valley, that, that.
No.
Like, so, done. Yeah, motion, motion not have zero score. And we did that intentionally because of the motion taken afterward, which is, I'm gonna make a motion that we table new business one and two. Who are not meeting on August twenty sixth. And in between now and then, the. Free drop Happy Valley to get clarification on question eight. On their liquor license for dual application, as well as question. But nineteen regarding their off, their business hours and ask, say, that they need, that they need about their hours.
Seven.
That, I'm good. About that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all of the favor of those people, I just.
Aye.
Done, I, done, I, motion passes for zero. Thank you for.
If you want those to attend or refer, you just have to make the question.
I, I, I don't necessarily feel like they depend, I think, on clarification of those two questions. And if they, if we get like revised application, there, you know.
I can reach out to liquor and the applicant if you'd like. Where the application comes to me, I can reach out to the, to the applicant and liquor, liquor board for those qualifications if you'd like.
Thank you. Okay, any other? Happy Valley. Okay. Uh, right, we are now at new business, we're pleased, and she's. Information, the ugly, I think that probably. That's through here.
Yes, please, as an updated technically, we need to, we need to re-here. And this year, our already has been upgraded from a. Upgraded from two, P A two, from a game break. Um, so many points that were in the report that I pulled out, um. Ten evaluation, please check out. The, and other opportunities available, both five A, or some of the A and B. Uh, he had both long-term liabilities relative to our typical testing. Uh, and maintaining computers, stable reserves, and fix our balances. Transparency of budgets and audits in a fund care. And attempts financially stable. And we have reported, um, whole report for everyone to review, and launch it. So I thought they'll treat you, just wanted to share with them.
It's working. Thank you, absolutely, thank you, I mean, we have you and them, and I, I just have to thank you guys, actually. And, and, and. Good news, thank you for the update. Um, we will move on to state of the week's four, spoiler grant.
This is another, um, resilience grant that I am going for with Southern Planning. For the first one, for a friend that we did, the, if you tested, thirty-five thousand dollars, we give. Help with costs in the new windows, the town hall renovation. So this is another firm that we all qualify for. And there is a requirement, um, the town council have a lot of support. And this plan would help find the cost of social peatles. To be put on the town hall during renovation, right now, that isn't planned to be done. And that would help with about seventy-five thousand. And there is no matching funds at all for this grant, just like the other one. Uh, and we have a letter. I'll introduce that, um, so you have to. Here's that, this was the one for the state.
Great, thank you, Jen. Um, next question. Or, I don't know. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the signing of the letter of support, uh, for the application for the seventy-five thousand dollar resilience grant.
Very good.
Thank you, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
All of them, aye, done.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you for that work, Jen. And now we are at our last business, new business number nine, board resignation.
That, here, slowly, just, I. Okay, come to say, oh, not to say, a personnel.
Okay. Um, second. We have a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Listen, aye, done, oh, aye, motion passed for zero. Well, I'm going to continue.
You're going to make a decision, right? Oh.
All right, I'll make a motion for us to come out of this session.
Sure.
Thank you, we have a motion second, all of the favor, Jeff.
Aye.
All of them, aye, done.
Sorry, uh.
I have a motion for zero, thank you for your patience again. Uh, our last order of business, uh, the board resignation, that's over by the nation city, uh, it would be, uh, letter of resignation, um, here at the time, where, um. Um. Speaking of nation, from the down from the renovation city. Uh, I will go ahead and make a motion to accept camera reservation by the down, camera violation committee, uh, with thanks for your service. Right, a second. Thank you, we have a motion second, all of the favor, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Done.
Right, fully, aye, aye.
All right. Four zero. Most pet, four zero. Um. On this topic, um, related to the down from the violation committee, um, I'd like to make a motion and now. That we, uh, the, um, that we invite key down from our violation committee to join us for our September ninth meeting. Um, they've been in formation for a little while, and they bring their bylaws before the council, um. In our first, for our first meeting in September, so we can review and adopt those, that's the function that we hold in this process. Um, the town council's responsibility to adopt bylaws for affect committees. Um, and so I will make a motion to ask the down from the renovation committee to put on their bylaws to a non-determined.
Sure.
Thank you, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Uh, madam. By our chair, um, uh. Was there a better way to go about this, Tim?
Oh, I just.
Oh, can see.
I just wanted to make, uh, in that motion, I just wanted to. Have me included to get them to, to tell them to.
You want to revise the question?
Yeah, revise the motion down to manager, contact the down from the renovation, they. Request, they present their bylaws, secure for a full one. On September nineteenth.
We modify the motion, so we be that, I am, my, oh, right, so moved. Um.
Still second.
Thank you, we have a motion in the second, thank you, and, um, any other discussion or question?
Sam, thank you, I appreciate you.
All right, um, all those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa, aye, done.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed for zero. Right, that takes care of all of our business this evening, I will, um, ask Tim and Jen to have us to the county.
I would find, uh, they did work on Nellie and Bay, and Forest Motor Road. It's sidewalking here on Dallas Street and School Road. Uh, sidewalk people on Alton Pride and Meeky Street. When you get, that faces on roadside mowing. And a line, another compliment on every bridge road. Police climate and three arrests, or accidents, under the V E graphic stops. Uh, lock locks, it was all the rules on channeling, the, the, they thought was making, just to give you that. It's not, um. It was placed on Alton Pride, it was purchased, probably is, goes, we checked all M V, purchased it. It measures speed, time of day, there's no bunch of details that they know, and practice control. Police officers on the road, always in time. And that, uh, you know, they came down, sold them today, decided to make the story. Myself and the deputy police chief was on a family, so we, the doctor. Well, it's like. Uh, three hundred and fifty-four hundred people, who have been to a charity national cleanup. With a great success. And the behavioral health liaison. He's assisted the last two weeks, thirty-three citizens, pre-staff. And has offered twenty-five referrals made to other agencies. Worked with eight collaborations with other agencies, boost climate support and other agencies. By the month, had thirty-one calls in the last two weeks, two hundred eighty-three at a date, around thirty calls over the last year. Right conditions have led to an increase, far as by danger over the past week. Uh, call volumes have been increasing steadily. Uh, the Jews. Starting to express the members, continue to step up, continue to step up, respond. Uh, non-transporting investment service, practice is now in service. Responding to calls, work continues on a primary unit project, which is on schedule. Uh, they'll be there on September nineteenth, present project, I'll be with that. Uh. The nineteen ninety-six Ferris Land Pumper, it was replaced with a new truck, was sold for. Twenty-three thousand dollars, the old, the one was picked up this past week. Uh, it was picked up by flatbed, taken to, it's in the tanks of football, of what. Will be put on a ship and. Will be put on a ship and transported with chili and see it on the line to Chile as a player.
What's today?
So important, adding heat filling permits, thirty-seven years to date, that sixteen, sixteen was, they had five hundred at the time. Three plumbing permits, sixteen, fifteen, uh, sixty, fifty, sixty, thirty-two inspections and four active violations that have been as well. Uh, planning, technology development, do you mind what applications to come in? For amendments, there's only one is with the workshop, acting agent use and be one of these two food trucks and weapons. Spal, the South Borough's small business meeting is scheduled for August twenty-first. At five p.m. will take place at the Apple Valley. Place down on the Low Lane Street. Uh, floor, which is, well, service folks with the guiding judges, lot more pre-business monitoring, they'll meet here, I mean, he bangs sponsoring this. Uh, and to follow me there and talk about our resources on the panel. Transport station, same as for recycling, and change hours, they've been well accepted, seems to be really good, only a few people that have been vocal about it. Uh, people may kick off, then it's Saturday, August sixteenth, remain twelve. At the transfer station, residents, while the opportunity at, there for the question. Well, one, ten and can go on recycling bins, and for fifty people who's pouring recycling.
At the library, George Count was two thousand eight, hundred and twenty-three, and tomorrow, three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. Peter Houston, hundred and twenty-two, twenty-nine programs, the month of July, that the total of four hundred and thirty. Local poet, Alice Timmies, invited to library, then on Wednesday the sixth. And twenty-four people attended that event, summer reading had concluded, the total of two hundred and fifty-seven, fifty events. On August nineteenth, at six p.m., joined Mary McCauley for a night of poetry. On August twentieth, at six p.m., offered visit, Sandra Alexander, will transcribe her journal, publication, house six and notes. In the recreation department, they are already planning for the fall, parlor program. The season will take off the first game in September, and the games begin the weekend of September thirteenth. Senior programs, um, it's Wednesday on the thirteenth, will be a ham dinner, and they have new entertainment, the shifters, you perform it. And the next trip that they're going on is to see Roy Ferguson tribute at the Amore Shop Club, and that will be Tuesday the nineteenth. And if nothing, preliminary value letters have been sent out for K R T, which is everyone's point now, where, uh. And there is opportunities to make appointments to come talk to them and ask questions. Over, um, your assessment, evaluation, and see the question from classes, data, um, there's any errors that you've seen, please come forward, some of those can be fixed before the post-up. And Bernard is also currently working on gearing up numbers and doing a current year, prior year analysis, or invented calculations, so they have those below rate too. Town clerk's office has been deleted, three hundred and forty-five motor vehicle transactions in the last two weeks. Nineteen by record transactions, which also include marriages. And twenty-seven industry transactions. The new dog license program has, have everything entered manually, um, Kim entered over a thousand new dogs into the portal in the last two weeks. They did eleven laundry acts, and Diane has passed a certification training, is now certified for something, congratulations.
You.
Good job.
Thank you. Uh, my area, Eve, um, did much trying of all documents that have been kept for many, many, many more years than you do. And we disposed of them, we are working on cleaning out the first floor, and the storage room up here on the third floor. Uh, public works has been helping moving stuff, we have the front end box being delivered, so we have almost everything labeled on the first floor when we're keeping, plenty of storage, or it can be tossed and thrown out. I had helped with three of my staff, we walked up twenty-seven boxes, uh, old personnel files, from Eve to fired, to everyone that's pretty much weren't here, we have people dirty twice a years. So to, to make up more space, we have them all picked up, scanned, will be confidentially destroyed, and you will have them all digitally missed. Um, I had probably Louie's had it opinion, and talked about that. Uh, I had a meeting with the director of client support, with Portria, it's a new position that she gave into, and she's meeting with all the towns to find out what issues were happening with Trioweb. That's everything from what, Chinese, office test, bio, business, it's us, we all work in this program, so the upgrade that we did a few months ago, there's. Pickups, um, so she's working with all the towns to get those things out the box, all of them, like, that was great. And you're working on the low rate options, we'll have those to present to you next week. And obviously continuing to work on gearing up these, getting them to the hive.
And. In front of my, my office, uh, I'm head of the citizens, who question right away. Through town, on land, on Agamemnon, just working on that. Um, we've had three vote vote meetings, updating vote book, Paul Trumaker, Dan, myself, and the general vote corporation, who's open to updates. Uh, they have two hundred and fifteen section of updates and question, being it's your, move on in the next process, or we're, hey, waiting to do a nap. Uh, there are weekly meetings with Oak Point, and Lassol and Chatter Brothers. Uh, meeting weekly, and that's chief man on Katie Moore on cable project. Um, first, myself and Jen, and first town general meeting, another with Betsy. Uh, the H R, first draft, we're down to almost completing the first draft, we'll send it to legal. Well, legal will be ready to, for workshop and votes, or to get due. Charcoal personality, who, that's, worked on a construction manager contract, and it's still difficult for working on. Um, it's taking all we can read on the Reddit, I got a meeting set up with our attorney. Our, I think, huh?
Yeah.
With our attorneys, our, go to land. Uh, worked with Lingways on several hall issues of transport station, that's affected, where two contracts go down. I went to E Colman last week, in meeting reference to being through to the board of directors, or already gone at once. I met with the CEO, flowers, and the fourth facility, um, overall financials. Things were in all, into the world. Uh, he's invited the downtown council and town staff. For, um, or if you'd like to go to or, it's about two hours, we'll set it up, it'll be, uh, probably like ten to twelve, they'll provide us lunch. But they just through the burn facility, track facility, recycling facility, and they just through the, uh, landfill. So one of the big pieces that I, I hadn't realized. So there, one of the licensing issues we had with. Um, they saw their license, the landfill was only licensed five more years, after the state for the condition license. We bought into Colman, Colman license to transfer for, for a, uh, landfill, was twenty years on a hundred percent, the same. They can take a hundred percent track, in their landfill for twenty years, that's what their latest contract. Or, sit, uh, three times that, everything they get, they burn ash, not recycle the track. And so it's condensed, obviously, so that means that their contract on ash, their landfill is sixty years up. That means that you got a thirty-year contract, thirty-year ownership, please with them. So our stuff will be taken care of thirty years. We don't have to worry about it, it's been for, uh, I did it before, because I was one direct, oh, but, does the council address the take before me for me? Like, you got something, alright, so I'll work on setting up some dates. Was it, yeah. Come on, I'll throw it. Um, and, you know, it's pretty interesting, they walk through the state, there's one thing about E Colman, um, that I, I want to stress, that, you know, they, they truly do. Virtual recycling, they do, they package all that stuff up, and they have different venues worldwide, that they send different stuff to. Uh, and it's so much more than just fracking, grassland, and crack home, and, and there's so much more to that, and we're part of them, so. We'll get reports and so forth, and, well, I would encourage it, I'll set something up in September or October, we'll go and take printout and, it could be, will be a process, let's see what it is.
Thank you.
What's that? Second act, one total, okay. Uh. Uh, Jen said, listen, I'm the bill right next. He, we'll give him some voting. So I'll add, I don't know.
Yeah, very nice, um, count behind. Done.
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with National Night Out, through friendly success. Like everybody said, you're not. And popular rumor, if you listen to it, there are a bunch of people that have taken out papers for, uh, town council this year, which is great. I will be heard them, or challenge them, come to meetings, I'd love to see you all within that two months. So you're up to speed on what we have going on, very busy, and that's your government.
Still one in there.
Uh, challenges out there, like to sit in the table, please come to the meetings, all right.
You done, that guy, I mean?
Yeah, uh, I have a couple of them, um, ones, on the lighter side, one's a little heavier, um, they're on the lighter side, um. Life presses tomorrow, just wanted to put that out there, we can all go, try to get it, uh, so. Be nice to see it, right up there, um, my second one, I wrote down, I'd like to have it put in the record, I have a prop for the clerk, um. See, I had a, I had a little, a day yesterday, so I, I got my writing, um. Nationally, the right to due process is under attack. Here in our own state, transphobia, racism, bigotry are being pushed. Pushed to the public square, endangering not only adults, but deliberately putting children at risk. And recent events have made clear, South Burwick is not immune.
He done, fine, he's in.
Are you gonna try this one? We'll get people.
Alright.
Do you want to go up there?
Yeah, why fuck yeah.
That, that, that's, hold on, sorry. Hold on. Alright.
There you go. There's peace by doing that.
Maybe turn around.
Yeah.
Calling this face.
Yeah. Have my, get my, alright. Get in that, get that, but. Sorry, I don't throw them that way, but.
Okay, Jen, just start over.
Alright.
For you.
Leave it, leave it, can you hear me?
Yeah.
As I was saying, uh. Nationally, United States of Process is under attack. Here are, in our own state, transphobia, racism, and bigotry are being pushed into the public square. Engaging not only adults, but deliberately, deliberately putting children at. And recent events have made it clear that South Burwick is not immune. White nationalists have been posting signs around our town, peddling their hate and division. Is this who we are? No. In twenty twenty-two, the South Burwick Town Council passed a resolution making it clear. There is no place for white nationalism, or any form of bigotry in our town. That resolution was not symbolic, it was a promise. copies of that resolution I have here tonight, and they can be opened, they are posted on the town's website. It declares that as a community, we stand united against hate, intimidation, and the ideologies that seek to divide us. Tonight, I reaffirm my commitment. I will call out white nationalism and bigotry every time it appears. I will not normalize it. I will not be silent in the face of it, and I will hold our leaders to the same standard. South Burwick is a place for respect, dignity, and safety for all. And I will defend those values without compromise. I call on our current town leaders and those seeking office to reaffirm that problem, promise. And I call on every resident of South Burwick to join in this committee. Confront hate when you see it, speak up when others are silent. Hold your leaders accountable. Let us stand shoulder to shoulder, protecting the rights, freedoms, and dignity of every neighbor and every visitor. Together, we can ensure that South Burwick is not just free from fear. But it will rem- remains to be a place where community, compassion, and justice can flourish for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Wonderful.
I'm not following that act, I got nothing to say.
I, I don't have anything to comment on, other than, Jen, thank you for that reminder of that information that we passed a year ago, and, um, I think every elected official, um, here actually, the, the whole reminder of. Who we're serving, who we're here for, you definitely reminded me, as the councilor, who has another year to start, absolutely. But, you know, great for reminding me and that, thank you. Um, and that's all, that I have to say, thank you, good idea, hi.
Yeah, you're, you're.
Second, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Your answer, thank you, I'll be here.